I'd like to call on my team to order Tuesday, November 7. Let me say I am not Mayor Jim Butler. Mayor Butler unfortunately has a case of COVID. His third during this process, believe it or not. But I talked to him late this afternoon and he's actually feeling better. He's at home resting and we certainly wish him the best for that going forward. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July, September 7, 2023 City Council meeting. I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices, especially for all of our young people. Silence all devices, we could please. We do have other members present to have a quorum here tonight with four people voting. So that is a quorum. So if votes are taken, obviously it's a three, three, one vote, but it would cover one way or the other. But obviously normally we have five people. So the four people individuals here now, two, two votes tie. They'll win there. So we'll see how that goes. Indication tonight, it happens to be me also, so if you can raise, close your eyes, please. Lovely heavenly Father, we come to you at this hour for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to discover ways to excel in our work, help us work together and encourage each other to provide equitable services to all of our citizens. We ask this in your name, dear Lord, amen. That's code of ethics. Recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is not a responsibility to imagine your duty to avoid conflicts of any risk. I ask that there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda item.
None. Fourth item is the adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to move to request.
I step, we remove item C from the consent agenda.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. Anybody, all in favor? Okay. The consent agenda, which for some of our young people are typically non-controversial items. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please allow us to know and we can certainly speak to those. To adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of the lease of communications equipment on the Race Street water tank to Altel Corporation DBA Verizon Wireless for three additional five-year renewal terms for the period starting May 17, 2024 and expiring May 16, 2039. Let me reemphasize that term. Three additional five-year renewal terms, total of 15 years. To adopt a resolution that's required by the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management, designating Chief Financial Officer Peggy Reese and City Manager Craig Honeycutt as the designated applicant's agent at the City of Burlington for the 2022 FEMA BRIC grant funding application documents. To approve the following personnel changes to the Planning Department to meet the current service needs effective November 7, 2023, reclassify the planning manager position level 39 to a planning services administrator position level 37, and to create a new associate planner position level 31 by shifting part-time personnel funds from the planning intern position to the full-time personnel funding account in the Planning Department. We need a motion on the consent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wall, second by Ms. Hikes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearings. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezon property from often institutional OI and general business GB to general business limited use GBLU. The property is 3.5 acres in size and is located west of the intersection of Collinwood Drive and South Church Street on the south side of South Church Street as addressed as 3216 and 3234 South Church Street and consistent of Alamance County tax identification numbers 112708 and 112582. We recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson.
Good evening. I would just like to recognize the applicant, Amanda Hoden, to come up and make her request.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Amanda Hoden, 804 Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. Appreciate the time to be here tonight. However, I do want to go ahead and request a continuance to your November 21 meeting just to have the benefit and guidance of the full discourse of your council that evening.
No move.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
City Council will consider adopting a resolution to set a date of public hearing for November 21, 2023 to consider an application to annex into the city of Burlington one parcel of land which is non-contiguous to the current city limits, located on the east side of Birch Bridge Road, north of Brock Hill Court, and south of Morgan Glen Drive, addressed as Zero Birch Bridge Road. The property is approximately 24 acres in size and consists of Alamance County tax identification number 127821. Jamie?
Good evening, everyone. So yes, this, well, we have received a voluntary annexation petition to annex this property that's shown, highlighted in yellow. This was the subject of a technical review committee plat, preliminary plat approval on August 8, 2023 for a residential subdivision of 51 units. So there is water and sewer connections currently existing on or adjacent to the property. And in that situation, staff is, the applicant is seeking annexation in order to make those connections. This is a standalone voluntary annexation request. It is non-contiguous. It is not adjacent to any other city limits, and it's within your purview to, to make that decision. We have on the agenda for tonight a resolution asking for you to consider a public hearing for the matter for November 21 for your council meeting. And I'm not sure if the applicant, there it is, there they are. So they are also in the audience in case you have any questions for them, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Jamie, I went looking for this property and there was no signage. Is there a reason?
We don't, we are not required to put up signage for annexation. We do send out, once the public hearing date is set, then we will send out public notifications in the form of a letter, but, and we'll also have advertisement in the newspaper as well. But we, we are not required to post the property.
As I understand it, the, the present request or consideration is for residential communities, is that correct, residential homes?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
So I go the resolution to set a date of public hearing.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City Council will now consider adopting ordinance amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 33-26J, solid waste refuge not collected by the city in Section 33-31, six solid waste curbside collection services affected upon the City Council approval. At this time, we'd like to recognize Public Works Director Gary Smith. And Gary, you can go through each one of these chapters, I know word by word, and explain all this to us, can you not?
Can we delay that?
Okay.
Good evening. This, this item's request for updating those sections that you mentioned, the current code allows the use of plastic bags to collect and dispose of yard waste. Back in 2020 during COVID-19, solid waste, the staff stopped collecting yard waste in plastic bags because at that time, they thought COVID could be possibly transmitted through the surface of the plastic bags. So that may or may not have been the case, but regardless, residents stopped using the plastic bags, and we continue to encourage that practice ever since. Solid waste, they take the yard waste to an LCID permitted landfill. And recently, we were unloading yard waste at the site, and the state was conducting, conducting a site inspection at that time. We had a couple of the paper compost bags that we were unloading at that time, and the inspector, he reminded us and the landfill owner that the use of plastic bags and the paper compost bags were not allowed in LCID permitted facilities. So plastic is a banned, you can't use plastic. But the paper compost bags, they discourage the use of those because of the ink and the glue that's on the paper. And LCID sites, they bury the waste. So that's where the problem comes in. The plastic in the bags are considered contaminants and they could affect water quality. They didn't fine us for doing this, but they did give us a warning, gave us both a warning. So the recommendation before you tonight is to bring the code into alignment with our current practice of not allowing plastic bags nor the paper compost bags. And I'd be happy to answer any questions this time, if you have any.
Okay, LCID, what does that stand for?
That is the, uh, land clearing and inert debris, asphalt, concrete, but land clearing.
I asked to have this moved to new business so we could talk about it publicly, not just pass it through on the consent agenda, but homeowners would be able to use a plastic container.
That's correct. 32 gallon containers, not weigh more than 50 pounds. So that's, that's what they can use. And also check for some of the other local cities, Elon and Graham, they're kind of in the same position. They don't accept plastic or paper bags.
So obviously those containers would be taken to the curb.
Correct.
On normal pickup days.
Correct.
And, um, do you have any idea how many, how much of a change will that be? Are you seeing a lot of the paper and plastic bags now?
No, and when we do see those, we talk to the residents and tell them kind of what the new, new plan is. I think they've kind of been prepping for it. We'll still service what they have, we'll take it back to our facility, break it down and dispose of it. But we're, we're telling them, Tom, next time, please just bring it to the curb or use a 32 gallon container. And most have been fine with that.
When is this taken?
Well, we can take it into effect now because we've already been warned by the state not to, not to bring those into the landfill.
So we can, we have to hand empty those containers?
Correct.
Also the loose leaves, correct?
Correct. Cemeteries and grounds, they have the, the automated trucks that go by and get the loose leaves. And then the solid waste, those guys can come in on the days of collection and pick up the, the limbs and bundled larger items and container items. If it's in a container, they'll service them.
Do we need, or can we set a date now that we'll start doing this so at least we can advertise that date?
We've already started.
Well, we've, we've been doing it. This is basically just having the ordinance to, we wanted to change it to reflect what we've been doing since, basically since 2020.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Gary. That's a, while it sounds fairly simple, that's a, that's a real strong movement in terms of the environment, especially, and that's something I think we could see going forward. Landfills will be licensed and inspected much more thoroughly, especially to ones near some of our rivers and water reservoirs, if you're. Okay, staff report, Jamie Lawson, City Staff provided City Council on October 23, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, activity that occurred at that particular meeting.
Thank you again. So Planning and Zoning Commission only had one item on their agenda for October 23. It was a limited use rezoning request. You can see the property highlighted here in the teal shade. It is located on the north side of Stood Street, just west of Woodset, Woodset Street. The property is currently zoned, general business, and the applicant seeks to rezone the property to high-density residential with a limited use. There were only two uses that they were seeking, Duquelex uses and single-family detached. So no multifamily was included. There was one member from the neighborhood who did come and speak to properties to the west and had some concerns regarding additional residential development in that neighborhood. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimously this rezoning request, and it is consistent with the future land use designation of the area as traditional residential. Staff also recommends the rezoning request. We are asking that the item be put on the November 21 City Council agenda for a public hearing. Looking in the audience to see if the applicant is here, and I don't, I don't see him. However, like I said, staff does recommend the rezoning request, so.
This is the vacant lot.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions, comments, Jamie? P and Z, did they have any concerns at all during the conversations with this?
No, I, I, I feel like they recognize that it is, residential is consistent with that, with that area.
It's really strange that there was a general business designation down.
Yeah.
That was a long time ago, probably approved. That's from council meeting, many years ago. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Jamie. At this time, it's our normal public comment period, and we have nobody to sign up tonight. So that's somewhat unusual. Ronnie, did you have a conversation with all these people outside before they came in, the other ones?
It was a very positive conversation.
It was good for you, good for you. I thought something had to go on there. City Council comments. We've got some really cool events coming up, and one is tomorrow. And if you have not been around City Park lately, tomorrow will be the ribbon cutting at the Burlington City Park on, at 3:30 in the afternoon for the grand opening of the new inclusive playground, which is located very near to the carousel. This playground was funded and built through a partnership with Blue Cross NC and Kaboom. And I'll let Nolan talk to us about Kaboom a little bit, the history of that particular organization.
I would probably defer to Mr. Walsh. He knows more about that one.
Mr. Walsh, you want to take a shot of that?
We call it passing the buck.
He does. He almost threw it over there.
I want you to get good information. Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. Kaboom is a nonprofit organization formed in 1998, so it's 25 years old, and their main, or their purpose is to help communities, especially communities that may be disadvantaged, low income, whatever, to get playgrounds for children in, in their communities. And generally, they do this by working with a, a community and like, like they did for us, the city of Burlington, with a idea about a playground. Most of their playgrounds are smaller in construction than what we put at City Park with the inclusive playgrounds, that just normal playgrounds. And they find a sponsor, they have a lot of big sponsors across the country. This is, this is a, a program that extends to all 50 states, and they, they find a sponsor willing to do the project, and they've been very successful. Just to give you an example, here in North Carolina, which I know a little bit about, Blue Cross Blue Shield, this playground that, that we put in City Park is the 16th playground that they've sponsored across the state of North Carolina in different communities. So that's pretty, pretty impressive on their part. And the inclusive playground carries a whole lot of bigger paint tag than, than the regular playground. You can put in a normal playground 50 to 75,000, inclusive playgrounds in the neighborhood of 500,000. So we, we spent a lot of time talking to Kaboom and, and vice versa, them talking to Blue Cross Blue Shield to, to get this playground coming to Burlington because it's a, our first in our system, the, the city of Burlington system of playgrounds, and we got about 25 that is inclusive. Some of our playgrounds have some play features that people, kids with disabilities can, can participate in, but not a real big range. But this, this playground at City Park will accommodate wheelchairs and, and other disabilities for children, and so it's, it's a pretty good play, thing with, they can participate in all of it, swings, the zip line, the, the play features. There's even a little group thing that goes back and forth, and also through Representative Dennis Rydel and the ARC of Alamance, we're getting a grant from the state of North Carolina to put in a wheelchair swing. So that means you, you put the wheelchair up on the swing and they don't have to transfer the, the child, child out of the wheelchair into the, into the swing. The wheelchair goes part of the swing. So that'll become a little later. We have to order that. We got that, that funding from the state pretty late, you know, the budget was delayed this year for the state, and so, but we're in the process of getting that ordered. Don't know exactly when it'll be available, but hopefully soon. But I can't thank Kaboom and Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina for taking on our project here in Burlington. It's the first time, we've tried a couple of times to get Kaboom to help us out in the past, never have been able to do it. But this time, they came through and, and we're very proud to have this playground that's going to be really a, a great new, new part of our system that has play features for all children. So we're very proud of that.
If anybody had been by there, it's worth your time to go by, and especially once, since it opens.
Yeah, and it also has the first poured rubber surface of any of our playgrounds. Most of our playgrounds are, we use special mulch, wood chips ground up to make a cushioned area for the children playing, so if they fall, they don't get injured. This playground, to accommodate wheelchairs, had to be a, a poured rubber surface, and it's, it's, it's very attractive, nice colors, blue and black, mingle together, and also very cushiony if you, when you walk on it. So, and it'll be, it'll be something we don't have to take care of every day like the mulch, you know, getting spread out or, or rain washing it or whatever. So it's going to be a great new addition to our city. We're very proud of it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it. And I don't know, Nolan, does that explain it very well?
Well, it's, it's, guys, it's very near the carousel.
It's right, right behind the carousel.
Visible from Church Street. Great parking, not only in front of it, but also the back parking lot where that always is near YMCA, so it's, you got parking there. You've got ADA accessibility from both of those parking lots to the side.
That's right. And we've, we've, one other thing, we've changed over, there's a lot of asphalt walkways there. We've changed over part of the asphalt walkways into concrete, and we will be changing over the rest of those, including from the parking lot there in front of that always down to the, to the playground to concrete too, so it'll make it a lot easier for accessibility.
It's a, it's a, it's a great project.
Very exciting. A lot of families have been asking for this for years and years.
Thank you very much.
Pretty cool. City Administration Office will be closed this Friday, November 10, in observation of Veterans Day. We certainly want to thank all the veterans for their service over the years. The 76th Annual Burlington Christmas Parade will be held Saturday, November 18, beginning at 10:00 a.m. If you, I'm not sure how many of you all, in terms of cable, gets an awful lot of the news from Raleigh, but if you recall last year at the Raleigh Christmas Parade, there was a tragic accident where a young lady, a young child was killed. A vehicle ran over the child. There's a lot of news, it's made national news, is that they, this past week, canceled their Veterans Day parade in terms of having no vehicles in it. I'm not sure about the Christmas parade, what they've done with that, but.
Motorized vehicles.
In the Christmas parade. We still allow those. We've been very fortunate over the years, but I think certainly our staff would need to be very observant after what happened in Raleigh last year. That was an awful tragic accident, so. But parade's going to be a fun event, weather should be good. I'm not sure who has control of the weather, but Mr. Wall, since you've got some real contacts, maybe you can take care of the sun. Okay? You got that?
I can have that handled.
Good. She wanted to know that, that's great.
Mine's not cold on the way there.
That's good, that's great. And that begins at, at 10 o'clock, the route is the normal route, is it not, Tony?
Yes, sir. Winds around downtown and ends up at City Park. And I would mention too, in some regions or some years, we, we always have shriners in, in a lot of their units. This year, we're hosting the statewide shriners parade because we have a local shrima that's ahead of the shriners from the state, and when that happens, they bring it here. So we've had it about four or five times, but we'll have a lot of shriners outfits in the parade too.
And as, I think as a result of what happened in Raleigh, certainly is the parade is, winds up, we certainly need adult chaperones, especially with the kids in terms of their walking units.
Yeah, we, we've made a lot of changes. We're actually getting the information from each driver of a motorized vehicle in our parade, license information, insurance, vehicle inspection, information so that. information, so that we don't have occurrence like happened in Raleigh, which was very tragic.
Yeah, that's great. It's good to hear. Any other comments?
I'd just like to, it looks like we have some visitors tonight. I wonder where they're from. Would you like to tell us what they're studying or what they're doing?
I think this group over here, a lot of them is in Burlington Youth Council, is it not?
It is.
Well, who wants to stand up and start introducing themselves now?
So, I'm Maggie Massey. I am the Director of Highway Youth Center and the Head of the Burlington Youth Council. With me, I have another staff, Amber Smith, as well as some other members. We have our Vice President with us tonight, Mady Baker. These kids, some of them have been with me for more than this year. Some of them just started this fall. They participate in community service and volunteer projects throughout the Burlington area and community throughout the school year, both in the fall and the spring. So, we are eager to do our work, and we always try to include a piece of the civic connection, attend a city council meeting, so that they can see what big city council looks like as opposed to our little youth council that we set up every Monday night, so.
What do you think so far? What's your take?
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Okay. Youth Council started here, actually, before I came to work here even. It started in the late 60s, so that's been in action for a long time. And the building was built for the Youth Council, for the Youth Center, and that was done in a new role council, I believe. And Bob was attorney. That was done in the late 70s. So, it's lasted, and it goes through different changes and evolutions of programs and so forth, but that's great. That's great. You know what else?
Some other folks.
It's over here.
I'm here from Mr. Honeycutt's political science class. How do you want?
We have a bunch of them here, but, so it's a requirement. That's the only reason they're coming, is required.
Can you, I used to teach that class before Mr. Honeycutt. Could you, any comments on him as a professor, or you can go ahead?
I'm great, you're not in yet. He's a great professor.
Good, good.
Great answer.
We got young people from all over the country, I would think, probably, in this class.
About some back in corners.
So, thanks for coming out, guys. Great university.
One other thing, Mr. Owen, in reference to the ribbon cutting that we had a couple Fridays ago in the turf field, staff did a wonderful job in putting that together, and it was a great event, great for the City of Burlington as well. Tony and his staff, perfect. That's an amazing sight of what that looks like, better than I envisioned in the very beginning. So, thank you.
And I think they had the youth tournament there the next day, did you not?
Yes, sir. We had our league play. We had 46 games. That's, the ribbon cutting's on Friday. That's where we played 46 games on those fields.
And those artificial fields, and some of you may have played on these, a lot of them had just had, like, rubber, you know, in between. This is Loblawli pine, if I'm not mistaken, is that right?
That's correct.
Completely different philosophy in terms of heat and safety too, so it's pretty cool.
Looks amazing.
It does look good.
Good job.
Great job by the staff too, for putting this together. That was no easy venture to prepare that.
Looks like something out of a Lego movie.
Very bright.
Signage looked great on it too. Any other comments? Not, do you have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?